Thirty-two, and I will call this regularly scheduled meeting of East Towne Public School Board of Trustees into session. And the first item on your agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending this evening. We appreciate you taking time out of your evening to be part of our school district's discussions. The first item under our agenda besides the pledge is our review of the agenda. Before the board this evening, we have this evening's agenda. And are there any questions or comments on the set agenda? Okay, saying none, then we'll move on to here the public. This opportunity of the public to address the board on non-adjutant items. On the back of this evening's agenda are guidelines for individuals to address the board. And so at this point in time, I would entertain and invite anyone to address the board. Okay, say, yeah.
I'm not quite sure.
No, go ahead.
But we were just trying to do an acceptance of a late application for out of district.
Yep, that'll be under new business. So yeah, that'll be the time to do that. So perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Nope, great question. Okay, so we'll now move on to reports. And the first item under reports is our Trustee Committee Reports. And I don't recall, I don't believe that any of the specialty committees met during our interim.
No, we have not had any committee meetings. We do need to get a policy committee meeting on the schedule. Kind of hit a roadblock with getting the librarians together in July, so probably there's not a policy committee probably this week with some possible dates sometimes for that. And I know Martin is on the policy committee, so that was one question. He's going to be in a long skip for a week, I think is what he might said.
Okay.
Depending on when that gets scheduled, it would be, need to be discussed if you want somebody to proxy for him or just go with the two remaining.
And we probably could go with the two remaining ones. I think that that would be acceptable. One thing I would add, though, is we do need to address the policy that was, or the strategic plan initiative that was agreed upon during our collective bargaining discussions as far as the workload, staffing workload.
Yeah.
And I think that might be a great opportunity to, if nothing else, begin a little bit of travel. Okay. And I don't think I have anything to really report as far as the Montana School Boards Association or KOSPA goes, but I will let Marcia know, since she is a delegate for MTSBA, that you do have another person on it. So we've got a full three-member version. But now they're starting to talk about some additional asks of those delegates besides you showing up for delegate assembly. So everything can be done remote. It will not take any travel time, but there might be some advocacy stuff that they might ask or request of.
Okay.
Just be forward.
Good, that's good.
Okay, speaking of, well, first off, are there any questions about the Trustee Committee Reports? Saying none, then we'll go on to the strategic planning. This is an opportunity for the board and the public to discuss the district's strategic planning and what our vision are for, what our, what our vision is for our future needs. So Dan, what should start?
Yeah, I don't really have much in the way of new information for tonight. I think we talked about it last month, that there's good news, bad news in that raise grant that the city received for the Valley Drive project. The good news was over $10 million towards the project. The bad news was they can't supposedly break ground on the project till summer of 2027. So that was, yeah, not a, not a great piece of information. I heard that from Mayor Harris, but I haven't confirmed the hows and whys of it.
Is that maybe a good question to ask? Is that the grant or is that the design?
My understanding was it was the grants because the, the design and engineering is done, my understanding, from Plant Road to Lewis Street. The grant is Plant Road to Highway 12. So there is no design or engineering for Lewis Street to Highway 12. So I guess I was kind of hopeful that we could at least break ground on our, the portion that runs by our schools, maybe as soon as next summer.
Depends how they write that grant. If you write it as a whole thing, then it's got to be the whole project.
And that could very well be the situation. So we could be back to the drawing board on, and then of course, you know what that does to prices when we kick the cab down the road three more years. So, right. So, so anyway, that's really the only thing I have to offer on that note. And then what you had mentioned earlier, Scott, that we need to get back, dig back into our strategic plans as well and deal with some of the commitments that we made during negotiations last week.
Do any of the board members have any thoughts or insights on our strategic plan as well? Somebody in the public, opportunity for you to weigh in on our strategic plan. Okay, this is an item that we do on a monthly basis. So if you ever do have any thoughts, feel free to bring those up. And each one, go ahead, Tyrell.
Recently, we had discussions with developers across the road. How are things going? Are we still positively getting land potentially or just kind of curious?
In the Habitat for Humanity?
Or I don't remember which one exactly, but I know we were having discussions with the plan owner about a swap or, you know, as far as potential future sites.
Okay, so the Habitat for Humanity plan, which is the subdivision adjacent to Mountain View Meadows, south of the rodeo grounds. I haven't heard any updates on that, but the last piece of information that I heard was still that nine-ish to 11-acre parcel that's kind of on the corner right there is what they had kind of set aside for schools. The other thing that you might be referring to is Mark Runkel had expressed interest at one point about possibly doing a trade with us for our nine-acre parcel that we have in Mountain View Meadows. And that really hasn't, there hasn't been any additional conversation. That kind of quieted down when Habitat came along and started talking about possibly setting aside property. So I don't know. And at one point, I was kind of hoping that Habitat's property would be adjacent to the nine acres that we already own because the fence line on the, on the eastern boundary of that is, is the city, City of East Towne and City of Hamilton boundary. And so if we could have got an additional nine acres adjacent to it, we'd have had, say, 18 acres contiguous there. But that's not probably going to happen. So no, that's, that's kind of all I know about right now.
Thanks. Any other thoughts? Saying none, we'll revisit this next month. And the third item under reports is notification of resignations. I do believe we have one.
Well, you've got Carrie Schwalter listed in your agenda. Carrie has been an instructional, well, she's been an employee in the district for as long as I have, probably longer. And she's been an instructional tutor for a considerable amount of time, I think, since we had instructional tutors in the district. And she's just been a, well, an outstanding community member, employee, parent, you name it. Super fun person to work with. She helped us out with her summer program. And she's decided to retire at the end of the calendar year, which means she'll be leaving us in December. So she had notified us early, and so we've gone ahead and accepted that on behalf of the board. I do have some bad news for you tonight, too. Brandon Hanson has decided to leave us. And I have his letter of resignation, and I'll include that in the packet for the special meeting on Thursday night, so that you guys can have a look at that. And Brandon's moving on. And so we are looking for technology director of the district, so.
Okay, ten be denied, correct?
Right.
I was just going to say no.
That's something I want to consider. Sorry, Brandon.
Sorry.
I did reach out to Brandon and congratulated him and told him it was a great opportunity, but he would be masked, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, clock fix. But now we've covered it. So that's too much good. Okay, we'll now move on to consent action items. Before this evening, we have the, before the board this evening, we have the minutes of our regularly scheduled meeting held on July 8th, the approval of our current and former warrants, personnel actions, and our surrounding school district enrollment approval. Typically, there are no, there's no debate on consent action items. However, if any member of the board wishes to do so, they could ask for an item to be set aside and discussed separately from the rest of the consent action items. And with that being stated, I would like to pull the minutes of the July 8th consideration. Are there any other removals from the consent actions?
No, but can we ask a question?
Yes, you can.
So can I ask questions about some of the charges? Just because, is that right? The pay warrants and stuff? Go on that or not?
We can pull it off and have them asked separately.
Okay.
If that's, if that's what you'd like to.
Do the warrants.
Yeah. So we'll pull the minutes and the warrants. Any other? Okay, saying none, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent action items that would include the personnel actions and the surrounding school district enrollment approval.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. My interest in the minutes was just solely on our action. That was made on one of the items. Jill, just for your, so that she knew where we're going with this. During our conversations with the Montana School Board Association's votes, the final motion that was made was by Vice Chair Murphit, seconded by Bellmeyer, to appoint me to submit the board's vote to MTSBA. I don't have a page number, so it's difficult. It would be probably one, two, three, fifth page.
Okay.
And it's third way down where it says motion by Murphit, seconded by Bellmeyer, to appoint Chairman Scott Walter to approve the vote. Do you see that?
Right.
Okay, there's no action on there. And so we should probably just put down unanimous vote for the motion.
Okay.
And that was all I had on that. So armed with that information, I would entertain a motion from the board to approve the July 8th, 2024 minutes as amended.
So moved.
Motion from Marcia, seconded from Mark. Any questions or comments for the board? Any questions or comments for the public? Saying none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. Going to the warrants. And Tristan?
So the, there's a uniform BBB, BSN sports. Do you know what those uniforms are for? We were talking about some of the sports have to raise their own uniform. So just curious what uniforms were bought for what sport and what sports need to be stepped up to.
Is it the 3264, is that true?
Yeah.
Sean, do you know the answer to that?
Boys basketball.
Boys basketball?
Yeah.
Do they do any sort of fundraising to help with their uniforms?
What's that?
Do they do any sort of fundraising to help with their uniforms?
Do they do?
Fundraising to help with their uniforms?
No.
Okay.
This might be a good time to clarify what the process is so everybody knows what we're doing with that. It's, and I'll, I'll let you explain it, Sean, but it's my understanding that there is a budget rotation for uniform purchases. But then if there's anything extra that the teams are looking for, that's where those fundraisers come out of. Is that a good way of characterizing it?
And I believe I shared with the board the uniform rotation schedule.
You sent that to me and Stacy.
Oh, okay.
Or you sent it to me and I sent it to Stacy.
I shared that out with you guys, but it's set up to go through 2029. So we provide each program uniform, I think, every four years. They, they're up for a new set. So that's where we pay for that. And then if they want warmups and stuff, they fundraise for that. And they go to Booster Club for those kinds of things because I know track got warmups this spring from, and Booster Club helped pay for that. But we, and then we do, one source of money for our uniforms comes off our bill, all field signs that are on there from companies that have logos. And then part of our budget for uniforms, we supplement it to our general.
So every sport gets a chance to get uniforms paid for by the school?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And then I just had a question about the tennis lights. Were those just put in? Do we get new tennis lights already?
No, we put power to the tennis shed.
Okay.
So that we have lights in there.
Yeah, the lights are in the shed.
So is the new shed and then new electricity to the shed or something to that effect?
Yeah, we got the shed last year, actually. And then they have things they need to charge and stuff they needed to do. And then once we got power to it, it just made sense to put some light in there so we can install that.
Thank you. That's it, that's all I had?
There's no others. I would entertain a motion to approve the current formal warrants.
So moved.
Motion by Tyrell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Marcia. Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Saying none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. And we'll go on to unfinished business. And first item in our unfinished business is updates on our summer maintenance, summer maintenance and our boiler project.
Yeah, so I did put the information from McKin Street. Should have been part of the supporting docs. We get weekly updates from them. Everything's been moving along on schedule, but they hit a couple bumps in the road since this update was sent. It's not going to be a huge delay, but they, there's contractor that they're working with hired a subcontractor to do the electrical work, and he didn't show up last Monday like he was supposed to. And he didn't show up today like he was supposed to. So they're rattling his cage a little bit to get him on site because they can't move forward with the controls and that kind of stuff. Like the, everything that operates the boiler until they actually have power to the boiler. So, and then the other thing that slowed them down a little bit is they, their material that they ordered to install, the vent flu at Radley got backordered. And as of this morning, it hadn't shipped yet. So he's working on making sure that gets here. All that means for us is, obviously, we're not into heating season right now. So it's not like we're in critical crunch time. We did have a desire to have those projects basically buttoned up by August 28th when school starts. We run into a little bit of a problem at Radley School because of worker access to the boiler room is also in the same zone where we have kids accessing the cafeteria for breakfast and lunch. And then we have concerns about strangers or unusual people in the buildings and making sure everybody who is working in our schools around our kids is background checked or accompanied by a staff member at all times while they're on campus. So at this point, those workers that might be in the Radley boiler room after school starts will be a guy connecting the controls and making sure that the controls are functioning properly. And then a guy who does the commissioning and comes in and runs all the systems and takes all the measurements to make sure that the heating system is functioning as engineered and designed. And that all should be done by the first or second week of September still is the situation on that. That, and I just had that conversation with Sean, he's our project manager, this morning in my office. So that's new information. The part that I wanted to share with you tonight is that we had applied, when we made the decision to add the second boiler to the Radley boiler install, because we originally only, only speced out one boiler and we were going to keep the old one. And then we had applied for that grant with the Tracy Foundation to, and they committed $75,000 towards that project, which at the time was estimated to cost $175,000. When we got that grant commitment, this was last November, we went ahead and signed the change order, and that came through the board to take a little bit of a leap of faith to get the second boiler done so that we'd have that Radley boiler room complete. And, and then the change order actually ended up coming in under estimate, believe it or not, at $142,000.
Oh, okay.
Right? And so that was really good news. And we set out to fundraise the difference between $75,000, which was the Tracy Foundation commitment, and the $142,000 price tag of the boiler. But the original letter from Tracy stipulated that they would commit $75,000 to the project if we raised $100,000 towards the project locally or through other grant sources. And so what happened between November and spring was the PTO did a heroic effort and raised, help me out, Jill, $44,000.
Correct.
For that second boiler. So in our minds, between Tracy and the PTO, we had $75,000 plus $144,000. So we had, what, $121,000 towards our $142,000 bill. And when I reached out to the Tracy Foundation, they said, well, that wasn't our deal. Our deal was you raise $100,000, we'll give you $75,000. And so I had to write a letter to the board, to the Tracy Foundation, explain the situation, that the actual cost was less than expected. At that point, they could have chosen not to contribute their amount, or they could have chosen to contribute a lesser amount since the estimate was below the $175,000. But in the end, they stepped up and, and met their commitment and mailed us a check for $75,000. So that was, I was sweating it out there, not just because it was 103 degrees outside, but also because I had $75,000 in the line that we've been counting on. So that was super good news. So we've got the money from the PTO. We've got the check from Tracy Foundation. The project's well on its way, and we should have substantial completion by early September on that. Other things that are going on, big projects, the TA Grant Project, if you haven't been down Lewis Street, you might want to take a ride down there on your way out. They are probably close to having it done. I drove through there yesterday, and they just had small sections that they needed to finish. And by done, I mean having the sidewalk completely poured. They still have to finish the asphalt and the, and just kind of finish everything out for the driveways for the residents there. But it's, it's looking really great. It's turning out really nice. What's that?
They still have to set the R of these.
Oh, right, right at the corner. So, so that's moving along. It's super exciting. The city's been out painting and updating our crosswalks. I saw they had marked out that asphalt on the entrance to EBMS here where that monstrous pothole is. So I'm anticipating that they're planning to get that done before school starts. We've had some minor asphalt patches done in the district parking lots, and the Prickly Pear parking lot's going to be resealed this week and restripped. So that's just kind of an ongoing maintenance thing. And then the last big project that we're hoping to get completed yet is getting a French drain put in the parking lot at the bus barn because we've got a low spot there that pools about a foot of water and slush in the winter time and just creates a huge mess. And, and there's no place for it to drain to. It's just a low spot in the parking lot. And, and it's gotten worse. And then with that freeze thaw every winter, that asphalt's really got degraded. So Gruber's going to come in, do an excavation there, put in a vault, French drain, integrate, and a concrete apron around it. And then Cap Paving's going to come in and finish that for us and fix the entrance to the bus barn because it's, there's a pretty good sized patch out there. It's coming apart. And that's just a result of a lot more bus traffic on there than I think anybody ever anticipated when we put the bus barn back there. So overall, I think things are coming along really well. The schools are looking great. Our guys have worked super hard. They're actually ahead of schedule in terms of getting the buildings prepped and ready, which is a really nice place to be in early August. We got our gym floors refinished last week, so they're curing and, and we'll be ready for student activity coming up here pretty quick when ball sports starts. So we're, we're in good shape. And I don't know if anybody's got any questions, but that's just kind of what I had to, I wanted to update from last month.
Any questions for Dan?
When they're striping Prickly Pear, can they restrike the entrance?
I can ask.
See if I can.
Yeah, they're not, they're not sealing that part of the driveway because that was chip sealed a few years ago. But I can ask them about it. Let's see. There would probably be an add-on, but it probably won't be too expensive.
Yeah, it'd be good to change that for me a little bit.
Yeah.
Did insurance come through for all the vandalism?
They are working with us. We haven't submitted our final report. So I probably have an update on that for you in September. They're kind of chomping at the bit to get it closed up. And to be honest with you, the delay's been on our end just getting all the paperwork and documentation together to submit to them for payment.
Does that increase our premiums?
Well, it didn't increase it significantly this year, but we, Jill and I have been having those discussions in the business office that we, we, we put our insurance out to bid last year and ended up at the same company because they were a little bitter. But we're probably going to want to do that again next year just to compare prices. Because I've kind of heard horror stories about that from a few other districts.
Okay, any other questions? Saying none, we'll move on to number two on the unfinished business, which is a discussion and update on our EPA rebate and our lion bus delivery.
Lots of great news. So there's, there's not a whole lot of update on the EPA rebate. We're still in a holding pattern. And I basically decided to just dig my heels in and not commit to anything until we get this first bus taken care of. And so we're weighing our options as far as the, the three rebates and the three additional buses that we're authorized to, to purchase if we plan to or want to pursue that EPA rebate that we got approved. The lion bus that we ordered two years ago was delivered two and a half weeks ago. Yeah?
It got hauled away.
Yeah, no, it's still there. It's in the bus barn. It, there were some issues. And let me, I'm trying to remember what they are. That, first of all, we had indicated on our order that we wanted three-point seat belts for students all the way back in the bus at all student seating locations. And the bus does not have those seat belts. And in a school bus, the seat belts are integrated into the seats. So it's not like you're just adding the seat belts. You have to change all the seats to seats that have the seat belts in them. And they missed that at the factory, sent it out here without them. And, and so that was obviously a pretty major concern since that was a considerable expense in our order. The other thing that wasn't on the bus that we were hoping they would get installed before they delivered it, but we knew might be an issue, was the automatic tire chains. There was a supply chain delay on those. And so they couldn't get them in time. And then there were several minor issues. For instance, the rear emergency exit door latch needs to be adjusted. There's some spots where the paint wasn't, since these are fit and finish items that I guess we were just kind of disappointed in, that there were some spots where the paint wasn't completed the way it was supposed to be completed. And I thought there was one other thing which is slipping my mind right now. So we, they were, they were chomping at the bit to get their check from us when they delivered the bus. And we called and told them we'd gladly give them the check when we had a written agreement that says what they're going to fix and when they're going to fix it. And at that point, they told the delivery sales guy to just come home and leave the check here. So now we have the bus, the title, and the check here. And they had originally told us when he left that they were going to send a truck back out, they're going to load the bus up, haul it back to Illinois, fix all the issues, and then send the bus back. Now, the latest thing they said is they want to ship all the stuff here, fly their technician out here, and have him do all the installs here on site at our place and, and satisfy our agreement that way. So we're waiting to see what their timeline is.
I don't know if they send all those tools because we don't have much.
So what's a carry-on like that?
I'd like to see that snap-on tool chest.
Right. Just in the luggage compartment. So this, that's, this is kind of the proof in the pudding part for us. That's been our concern all along is the service after the sale. And they know it. And so far, I can't say that I'm super impressed. And I'm just kind of holding my breath to see how this. of holding my breath to see how this next part works. But we do have the bus. It's drivable. We can use it. We can go ahead and license it and put it into service if we can get it to pass inspection. I do have a concern that that rear entrance emergency alarm door that isn't latching quite easily as it should will cause it to fail in inspection. So we're, we have to discuss that with Nick before we even ask the highway patrol to come look at it.
Once we put it in the service, do we have to ship off the old bus?
No, we have about six months to satisfy the rest of that contract. What we, so what we have to do with this grant is we have to pay the full amount of the bus, which is three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And then, once we satisfy all our deliverables in the contract, which is photographic evidence of us crushing the bus that we have to crush, then the DEQ sends us about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars back to reimburse us for the grant portion of the bus. So all in all, the bus here costs about sixty grand. When it's all said and done, we'll probably drag our heels as long as we can on that part of it, just to make sure that we've got an actual running, because we have to, once we get ready to crush that bus, we have to take all the markings off it, take all the mirrors off of it. There's a whole bunch of things we have to do before we take it to Pacific. So we don't want to take it out of service until we're pretty confident.
We don't have any issues contractually, though, with running the electric one in the meantime.
We're not obligated.
Or licenses or anything like that.
Well, we'd have to get it licensed, and we have the, well, it's not a title, it's the.
I guess what I'm worried about is, is if we start running it and they don't meet their obligation for fixing the bus the way we ordered it, then if they end up giving, are we end up giving it back? Is there any usage cost we'd have to pay?
I do not know that.
Because it's a used bus of that.
Right, and it's kind of a mess, because as far as I can tell, our warranty started the day it came off the truck on our property. Even though we haven't paid for it yet, we've got the bus and the title. So those are questions that I need to flesh out with them too yet, because it's only a one-year warranty. And we don't really want it to start and then not put the bus into service for six months, and then basically get six months of warranty of actual use out of it.
Like one year plus two, kind of like the ordering system?
Right. I like that. I like that logic.
That's a good response.
It is. So that's where we're at.
Yeah. Any other questions for Dan on our bus?
Or, I was hoping that I was gonna be taking you guys out for a ride in tonight. Terrell will drive us around town, but.
Heck yeah.
It's not, we didn't think it was quite ready for prime time yet.
I'm not trusting him to drive me around anymore.
Hey, my kid got his.
Yeah, I'll trust you. He'll be safer. Okay, if there's other questions, then we'll move on. Before we do move on to new business, did you want to introduce your name over your administrative staff?
Oh, yeah. So we didn't have principal reports tonight. You guys got off early. We have a few different exciting things to report. So first of all, I will just take a moment, introduce you. Mr. Paul Condon, he's in the blue shirt back here. He is our new principal at East Helena High School. I know a lot of you guys have seen his name. A few of you are on the interview committee and got to meet him that way, or at the, the event that we had, the meet and greet, yeah, thank you. And got to know Paul a little bit there. He's been on duty for about three weeks now.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So he's, he's, he's got his feet wet at this point and, and knows what he's up against, but he's, you know, got a great attitude, and we've been meeting pretty regularly and chatting things up. And then between Lindsay and Gus is Trish Clock, and she is our new vice principal at East Helena High School. And just welcome to you guys, and obviously, we're excited to work with you and have you as part of our team here at, at East Helena Schools.
Welcome.
Go.
Thanks, great to be here.
And then I, I will let you know, I don't think I'm sworn to secrecy on this, but the reason Brandon's not here tonight is Sadie's in the hospital, and they're gonna have a baby.
I just got a picture that has not happened.
That hasn't happened yet?
You just got a picture of, you say what?
A bird flocking in the room.
This night's coming.
Yeah. We'll wipe the smell off his face. Okay, so now we'll move on to new business. And the first item under new business is the potential appointment of a student representative to our board. Dan, I will let you.
Yeah, so this is a process that we first kind of got word of, I want to say, back in March or April, we had, his name's escaping me, his face is right in front of me, student from East Helena High School approached the board with the resolution from the Montana Association Student Councils promoting the idea of student representation on school boards across the state of Montana, and encouraging us to adopt the policy and procedure for having a high school student as a student rep on our board, something that we've never had before here in East Helena. And so we went through the process of adopting the policy, getting the procedure in place. We advertised for applications in June, and Brooke Harris applied for this position, first ever. And, and so I interviewed Brooke at the central office, and she's got a great resume. She's an outstanding student at East Helena High School, and I'm recommending to you tonight that we go ahead and appoint Brooke as our student rep for the 24 and 25 school year.
Okay. I would entertain such a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the appointment. Do we have a second?
A second.
Yeah, a second from Marcia. Any questions or comments from the board?
Is this how you want to spend your Monday nights?
I notice that there's a common element to what we're saying. How about you, Brooke? Do you have anything that you'd like to say in your defense?
No.
We sometimes can question your sanity on it, but the thing is, is that all of us are a little bit off that we're in this position, so. Okay. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Saying none, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Brooke Harris as our new student representative, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries, and we will now swear Miss Harris in.
No, we just raised your vote, Mr. Page.
Whatever you come around. Probably easier. It's gonna be easier if you have the script as well.
Okay.
So. Raise your right hand and aye and state your name.
Aye, Brooke Harris.
Having been selected as the student representative.
Having, having been selected as a student representative.
For the East Helena Public School Board of Trustees.
For the East Helena Public School Board of Trustees.
Due by recognize and accept the responsibilities.
Due by recognize and accept the responsibilities.
And objectives in representing the students.
And objectives in represent, in representing the students, sorry.
Sir? Of the East Helena School District.
Of the East Helena School District.
I will do my best to foster.
I will do my best to foster.
And promote a positive relationship.
And promote a positive relationship.
Between the Board of Trustees.
Between the Board of Trustees.
And the students of the district.
And the students of the district.
As well as.
As well as.
Take an active role in the creation.
Take an active role in the creation.
And revisions of school board policy.
And revisions of school board policy.
I will do my best.
I will do my best.
To promote communication and information exchanges.
To promote communication and information exchanges.
Between the Board of Trustees.
Between the Board of Trustees.
And the student body during the 2024, 2025 school year term.
And the student body during the 2024, 2025 school year term.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Brooke, you have a spot at the table here next to Marcia.
And we will need you to sign off on both of those, and we'll get those after the meeting.
Okay. I got yours. Thank you.
That's it.
I thought, I thought it was way more rigorous than our.
Very lengthy.
Quite the oath. You know, and believe it or not, it was tapered down from some of the ones that I've seen.
Crazy.
Shoot, I'm gonna need a shave. Okay, so the next item is our trustee financial report, financial summary, report, review, and approval. And Jill, Dan, I'll let you take off.
Yeah, so the TFS was posted last week. Jen sent out the links to you guys. It's a lengthy document, mountains of detail. This is the one project each year that sends district clerks and business managers over the edge. And it was Jill's first time, and so this is kind of your last first time for this first year of work as a business manager. Kim did come in and help out some, but as we've kind of moved through this, one thing I've noticed is Jill's become much more independent and, and very clear about her understanding of district finances and where we've been and where we're going. And I'm just super impressed with the work that she's done here. And because the TFS is a very detailed document, if people have specific questions about anything that's in it, I'm gonna let you ask Ms. Hooker, hi.
Okay, before the board, you do have that TFS report. Do you have any questions? I'm assuming you all read it thoroughly, so.
Oh, yeah. I actually, I don't have a question, just editorial on page three of fifty-nine. Sorry.
I like it. I love it.
I love it. No, not complaining. Nope.
Last line item, we can spell building correctly.
Yeah.
Those are actually from OPI.
Are they?
Yeah.
Really? Oh, good, you can send it.
It's pre-filled, huh?
These are all pre-filled from OPI.
Send them my regards. That's nice.
I imagine that's not the only type of.
Very detailed. Very detailed.
So if there's no questions on it, then I would entertain a motion to approve the TFS report as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the TFS report as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
And a second from Stacy. Any additional questions, comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Saying none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. And with that, then, we dovetail directly into approval of our fiscal year 2025 budget.
Yeah. So the, the budget report was included in your packet, which gives you a detailed breakdown of how the Office of Public Construction works with school districts to arrive at our budget amounts. I know you guys are pretty keenly aware of it. The general fund budget is pretty strictly defined in statute and formula through the Office of Public Construction as to a maximum amount of how much the school district can spend every year, and that is derived through a series of formulas and legislative changes over the years, and a few lawsuits along the way that were designed to equalize funding across the state. The main page that I like to focus on with the board is the second page of the budget report document that was in your packet, which lists the budget amounts for the various funds that the district manages. Obviously, the general fund, but then transportation, bus depreciation, tuition, retirement, some of those which are formulaic and derived by different formulas that were given through OPI, and some of those which are just permissive levies where the board can set those amounts where they want it to be. For instance, transportation is a, is a permissive levy that the board could set wherever they want to set it. We just need to be able to justify it to our community as to why we're spending that much money. What I wanted to share with you tonight is, I'm gonna pass one of these down to Mark and keep one for yourself.
Let this show this one.
Yeah, it's, this is last year.
This year.
Seven, two, three, four, five, six. A few copies that folks didn't look at, they want to. So what you're looking at in this packet of three pieces of paper is fiscal year 24 budget report, which is last year. This year, we're approving the fiscal year 25 budget report, which is also in your packet, and then the resolution 237 from the March board meeting. The big lesson here tonight is that we're magically a beneficiary of two things that are going on. The first one is increasing taxable valuation in the district, and that's been a story that we've been telling for at least the last ten years, is that we've seen significant increases in taxable valuation. And that happens when you've got builders putting up hundreds of homes every year for people to move into. And I don't really see, although, you know, everything you read in the news and economic indicators are that we're gonna see a slowdown in housing, we're not gonna see a stop in housing, because ninety percent of the building lots in the Helena Valley are right here in East Helena, and, and they're either approved or on the drawing board for approval. And so there's gonna be a long-term building cycle that's gonna go on here for, what I would guess, it's gonna be in the next ten to twenty years. And so that taxable valuation is gonna continue to increase, and what that does when the taxable valuation increases is it increases the amount of money that each mill that we levy raises for the district, and it spreads the burden of the district finances out among a larger base of people who are, are paying that amount. So, so our taxable valuation increased by about one point three or one point four million dollars this year over last year, so it wasn't as significant as the increase that we saw last year, but still pretty significant. I anticipate that it's gonna increase by at least that much again next year, simply because Town Pump will be completed and built, and that's commercial property, and it is a huge project that is gonna be a significant asset to the tax base in East Helena. The other thing that's going on is the METG is processing their sale of property over kind of in the neighborhood of American Cammit. You've got Power Townsend that's buying a pretty significant parcel there. That's gonna, they're gonna put in an industrial building projects plant there, and possibly a retail lumberyard is what Kevin's telling me. American Cammit is possibly gonna build an office building across the street from their, their current plans, because right now their office building is in downtown Helena on Last Chance Gulch. Although they may be veering away from that plan, I'm not a hundred percent sure what they're gonna do. Seems like there's one more commercial. So these are commercial projects, not residential projects, and, and commercial projects add significant value to your tax base. Residential projects do as well, but you need a lot of houses to boost your, your tax base as much as one Town Pump.
Is there more commercial going in at Mountain View Meadows, too?
That is my understanding, yeah, so.
I think there's a, I know at least one lot has the making engineering firm that was gonna build on.
Right, and then Mark Grunkel's talking about a restaurant.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's about time.
Yeah, and so that area, when you come off the Viaduct and you look off to your left, you see where they have all the culvert. So they recently annexed that portion into the city of Helena, which it wasn't before, I guess, and, and they're expanding into that zone, and I think that's where some of the commercial buildings are gonna go, but they're all in our district.
I heard that was apartment buildings with.
Commercial underneath.
Yeah, commercial underneath, so.
Yeah, more like a town center kind of place.
Yeah, high-density.
Yeah. So gotta wait and see what's happening there. They kind of, they put all the infrastructure in there and then kind of hit a standstill for a little while, but. So, yeah, I mean, those are all examples of projects that are coming down the pipe. So when you put your fiscal year 24 and 25 budget side by side, you'll notice that there are some differences. We did see an increase in our general fund budget. That's partly due to the state increase in AMB, which I believe was. Two point, yeah, 2.9%. It's also due to our charter school base aid that got approved through getting 227 Academy approved. The crazy part, when you look at the increase in the amount of money, is that the amount of mills in the far right-hand column actually decreases. And that's what I'm talking about when we talk about taxable valuation. And I want to be clear, just because the mills go down doesn't mean a person's property taxes go down because that depends on how those mills are applied to your individual property. But it means we're not increasing the number of mills that we're assessing against each individual property in the district. You can use that same logic through the various funds and look at that. I think that the second to the last column is an important one to keep your eye on because that's our local assessment. And so when you look across the general fund line for fiscal year 2025, you'll see that local assessment is a fraction of the $14 million that our general fund budget is. And so that's the amount that the local taxpayers are paying. And those are, basically, those are over-based mills that are approved. And so the balance of that $14 million comes from the state through what's called state equalization. And that's the 95 mills that were being argued about between the county and the governor's office last fall was that the state collects those 95 mills across the state of Montana and then redistributes that money to school districts based on student AMB counts rather than your local tax base. And that's how you equalize poor districts against rich districts so that the kids are supposedly getting the same access to resources. At the end of the day, if you go down to the bottom of that column, you'll see that we're assessing fewer mills this year than we did last year. And I believe our local assessment in pure dollars is down a couple hundred thousand, too. Right? Couple of other things I want to point out on here before we move on, and I hope I'm not boring you to death. If you, the bottom section of your budget report is your debt service. And so there's two lines there for our two different bonds that we passed. The first line, the bigger one in terms of dollars, is the high school bond that we're paying back. And the one below it is the Prickly Pear Elementary Bond. And one thing you're going to notice there is there's also a decrease in the number of mills that's being assessed. And that is, again, a result of that increase in taxable valuation. And if, I don't know if you remember from last fall, I talked to Bridget Ekstrom down at, so, yeah, she's from DA Davidson. And she had actually sent me an email that the individual tax burden per household in East Helena for the high school bond had already decreased by nearly 50% from the time we passed the bond to last year's tax assessment. And that's just due to the increase in taxable valuation and the number of homes and commercial properties in the district. But more significantly, there is, on the Prickly Pear Bond, you'll notice that last year we assessed over 27 mills. This year, we're assessing 4.3. And the reason for that is.
So we were awarded GTB, I think it's gross tax base. And they gave us the money last year, but it can only go to one of them. So it was $400,000 or so, and it went to, we could, it could only do the first one. And so the money went to there, which lowered it because it kind of rolls over. But from what we were told by OPI, it sort of kind of averages. You can only stick it on one of them. I couldn't divide it into two. And OPI is saying that this year, they're anticipating that we're going to get another one around $400,000.
So it was unexpected money. And basically, it's paying our mortgage on Prickly Pear Elementary for the next two years is what it boils down to in terms of trying to put it into regular person speak and not OPI accounting speak. So almost reduced the number of mills for the Prickly Pear Bond significantly for at least the next two years. So that was kind of a nice surprise.
Will those go back up once we go on?
Yeah. Yeah, because we're obligated by law to pay those bonds.
Right.
And so if we, if we're not getting the state cash flow towards that, then we've got to assess it.
So our taxpayers get essentially a free hiatus. Okay.
And it's not going to be hundreds of dollars off somebody's tax bill, but it's still a little something.
Better a sharp stick in there.
Right. A few other things to point out. I think the biggest one is that when we go back and we look at resolution 237, which is where we're supposed to look into our crystal ball and predict for the community what we think we're going to assess next year versus what we're actually going to assess, we've got some fairly significant variation. And the biggest one is in transportation, where we predicted a change of revenue in this coming year of $49,500. And it actually ended up being, was, is it $100,000 exactly? The reason there is we published resolution 237 in March. We settled negotiations in May, and we settled a $6 an hour increase in pay for drivers. And that was our effort to keep the drivers that we have and be competitive with first student. And so we had to take a look. And so that basically amounted to about a 33% increase in what we anticipate we're going to need to pay bus drivers next year. So we had to go into the transportation budget, look at what our salaries were, and increase that in order to meet that obligation. The other thing that's got me a little bit concerned with transportation is that we did run a little bit of a surplus this year and had some money left over in the budget. And that created opportunity for us to do some things like put that French drain in over at the bus barn and fix some of the bus driveways at the schools around the district. But I think part of the reason we had that extra money in there was diesel fuel is pretty cheap right now compared to what it was a couple of years ago. And with the unrest in the Middle East, it's really impossible to say that we're going to keep $3.50 a gallon diesel fuel for another year. And it could easily go up to $4.50, $5 a gallon again. And we just kind of need to be prepared for that. The other big difference was bus depreciation, and we had predicted a $60,000 increase. We actually took a much smaller increase in bus depreciation. The reason for that is when we predicted that $60,000 increase, we thought we were going to have a brand-new $400,000 electric bus on our lot by the first of July when we needed it here to put it on the depreciation schedule, and it didn't actually arrive until the end of July. So it won't go on the depreciation schedule until next year. So we're assessing fewer mills than we predicted there. There was a few other areas that varied, like adult ed was off by a little bit. And the reason for that is we typically assess one mill for adult ed. And so we predicted a $0 increase because we didn't know what was going to happen with our taxable valuation. And it actually ended up being like a $1,000, $1,400 increase, I think is what it was. And a similar situation with the flex fund. We levy permissively in the flex fund to match the transformational learning money that we get for the high school. And that's driven by a formula. And so that actually went up slightly from what we thought of what's going to happen, too. With that, I probably ought to just shut up and see if anybody's got any questions. And if you do, ask Jill.
Please, before you have any questions for Dan or Jill. Okay, if there's no questions from the board, then I would entertain a motion to approve the school district's 2025 proposed budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the school's 2025 budget.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Marcia. Any additional questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public? Saying no, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Motion carries. And Jill, thank you for your work. I know that this was a big lift on your first go-around, but I think you did well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll see, see what comes up out of it. I'm sure there might be some, some errors in there, but I think that most of those would come probably from OPI's reporting system as opposed to.
That's what she'll say.
Yeah, nothing else. Yeah, it's a good excuse.
That will be the reason.
Some of their previous histories would actually give that credibility, so I think you're probably safe. Okay, we'll now move on to the fourth item under new business. And this would be our reconsideration of, under first reading, for policy 3145 in our foreign exchange students.
Okay, policy 3145 should have been included in your supporting documents. What we want to discuss tonight is the language on page three under placement quotas for foreign and student exchange organizations. When we, this is how I remember it, and you guys can chime in on it, those of you that were around. But when we adopted this policy, it was probably, could have been as much as four years ago, the model policy that we considered from MTSBA allowed for four foreign exchange students in this language right here. We were not, I guess, confident about how that would play out in a school the size of East Helena High School and decided to play our hand pretty conservatively and trim that number back to. Over the, I think, last year and the year before, I know last year we had two foreign exchange students. I'm pretty confident the year before we had two foreign exchange students. This is the first year it looks like we might actually get a third request for a foreign exchange student. And in response to that, I want us to take a look at this policy to, first of all, be prepared for that request, but second of all, make a decision as to where we want to be for the long term. I feel like the school can easily handle up to four, which was the original recommendation. I seem to remember that when we discussed this before, we said, well, let's set it at two and then decide later if we think we need to increase it. If we don't increase it, it puts us in a situation where we would probably have to say no to that third request if we get it. And I don't know, but the third request might be your foreign exchange student. Because is there, are there already, this, we've had a hard time wrestling this cat for the last three weeks, but are there two already approved and enrolled?
Yes.
Okay. So your foreign, so this penner's foreign exchange student that we want to talk about later in the agenda could be number three. And so that's, that's kind of the point of the conversation here. I think Scott had a good point when I brought this up with him and said, well, what's the point of having any number in there if you guys are just going to want to change it every time you get another request for a foreign exchange student, which I think is a pretty valid thing to point out. But I think the reason that I want to bring it up with the board is we are going to probably see a third request, if not this year, in the future, maybe even a fourth. And it's not as if, well, if we get five or six, we'll just keep coming back to the board and asking. I think if we can set it at a place like three or four, we'll be at a spot where we're just able to tell the exchange companies and families, we can't take any more buyer policy. I don't know, do you guys have any insights, inputs, want to weigh in? Brooke, do you know any foreign exchange students that you thought were cool and want to come to?
I can tell you a little personal story.
Sure.
Obviously, you know, I am an American citizen. I've been here for 21 years. So, but yeah, but when I was in New Zealand, we had exchange students as well. And I was actually traveling to Scandinavia one summer to visit my cousin. And two of the students, one was in Finland, one was in Denmark. So I went and visited both of them. So that was really cool, as well as, you know, just getting that different perspective you get in school from, you know, people from these different countries. The way they look at things in Wales and things is very different. And the way that people from my country look at things is very different to the way that you guys look at things. As you well know, you know, things here in Helena, you look at things different, a little bit differently than people, say, in Arkansas or Mississippi. Okay, so I think it's, I think it's great value if the school can, you know, obviously accommodate it. And obviously, if you've got students that are old enough to handle their being away from home for a year, you know, I think they certainly do a great value to your school, your school culture. You agree?
I agree. I think it's like, it's a little rough in the beginning because especially like some kids that don't, especially speak English, that's really hard.
Yeah.
So that's, takes some getting used to. But it, I think it's really good for the school and really good for the environment. It's really good for kids to see the differences.
And kind of the way, when Dan and I were discussing this as we were setting the agenda, one of the things that also came up on it is that, if I recall correctly, a lot of the discussion that we had on the board was whether or not the administration felt comfortable with it. And I think we relied heavily on Brian and Dwayne to weigh in on that. I don't even know, I think he may have been.
Yeah, I don't know if Brian and Dwayne were even here yet. But.
You could have had to rely on me.
Me, and then that's even more. You know, there, I don't discount or disagree with you all as far as that the benefit that's associated with foreign exchange students coming in and the diversity of culture that you can get from that. I think that that's very important. But I think you also have to admit that there's some level of disruption that having somebody from a foreign country brings to a school. And so I think that's kind of what the conversation that we had was, is how many is too many before it begins taxing the resources of your staff? And so I, I'm going to rely heavily, you know, if we're considering this, I'm going to rely heavily on the administrative staff to weigh in on it. What do you guys think? And I'll throw it out.
Well, I think, you know, I think yes, but once again, I might be biased because I've dealt with foreign exchange students in most of my schools. And it's always been a really good experience for the kids that are there.
Chris?
I would say the same thing. It depends on your translators who are available to help support the students and really what country they're coming from as far as languages and all of that. But if we have the staff to support it, definitely wouldn't say we should keep these students out.
I think, I think inside of the documentation, too, you know, the students are expected to, you know, be away from home for a year. They get told that. They're also expected to have a certain level of English. Now, if their level of English isn't good enough, they shouldn't be here. They probably should go home.
I mean, in any experience, I mean, I've, not that I have a ton of experience with international students, but for the most part, I think their level of English is pretty darn good to be able to come here. I mean, there's no expectation that I've ever experienced that's been where you had to have a translator or a situation where there were issues with that. But, I mean.
Yeah.
The expectation, they learn a lot of English there.
In our opening in this policy on page one, lines that out pretty clear, that they've got to be.
Yeah.
Fairly sufficient. It says sufficient knowledge of English that we can administer a test, which, you know, presumes that we would, you know, if we felt like we needed to assess their English language skills, we could do that and maybe deny their placement based on that. So I, I mean, I think that's pretty well addressed there. I feel like, too, Scott, part of the discussion was also just related to facilities. And if the school's getting full, if it's starting to feel crowded, are we going to want four foreign exchange students coming in and taking seats and filling up classrooms where our own resident kids might want to be in or benefit from being in that class? So that was a part of that conversation as well. And I feel at this point that the impact of even four students to that entire student body of 600 is probably going to be pretty minimal. In the, the exchange students that we've had so far, I haven't ever heard of any situations where an East Helena kid wanted to get into, say, a welding class, but the, you know, the French kid took that spot and he couldn't get in, or our own kid couldn't get in and take the class. I don't, I think our kids preregister and register for classes before foreign exchange students ever get a chance to sign up. So they're getting first dibs at the courses that they want anyway already in, what, February? March is when you're signing up for classes. So I don't really, you know, again, don't want to open the door. So I don't really, you know, again, don't want to open the door wide open, but I do feel like we could comfortably change the language here to three or even four foreign exchange students and, and not be selling our own kids down the river or cramming our high school full of kids where we're, you know, jam packed.
So my only question is, is how does this play with out of district? Is a foreign exchange student considered out of district?
Well, it depends on what house they're residing in, which brings, that'll bring us up to item six on your agenda tonight.
Someone in district lives with them in the in district, is that then, it's not an out of district tuition, is that a guarantee or?
Well, it's not, so there's, there's a whole bunch of different moving pieces to that puzzle. So like Paul said, we've got two that have been accepted and admitted. If another East Helena family living in the district wanted to take a foreign exchange student, and we keep the policy worded the way it is right now, and they just accept the child and come walking in the doors, we have to say no. And we're not obligated to take that kid, is my understanding. That, for the most part, the exchange companies do a lot of that legwork before they ever place the kid, so they'll be calling the school ahead of time saying, do you have room for an exchange student? I've got a family that lives in your district, and when they're trying to match students to families, that part of the exchange company's coordinator's job duties are to make sure that there's going to be a school placement in the school that the family wants the kid to go to. So they're making those calls ahead of, or emails ahead of time. But not always, I mean, there could be a situation where somebody screws up and then too bad, you know, depending on what our policy says.
So if our policy were not to change tonight and we were to remain at two, the student would just stay in the host, or in their, their country, or is it already done, DLG no comment?
That I don't know. See, because we don't, we don't deal with the placements really at all, that's between the family and the, and the family in the other country and the tour company or the exchange company that works between them.
I'm looking at the timing, I mean, it's August, it's pretty dang late to be looking at policy changes.
Why we have a special meeting scheduled for Thursday night.
Which is I'm not thrilled about.
I understand.
It'll be really fast, so. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And in that, I think you were alluding to the guaranteed placement, that item number two under, it just says a foreign exchange, or a student located, a host family within the district does not infer that it will automatically involve this student.
How does that work with the new laws we got on open enrollment and that kind of stuff? Is a foreign exchange student under that law, or that's, that's a?
It's a different program.
That's a, okay, that's a Montana resident, that's gotta be, okay. Sorry, I'm not, there's.
No, it's okay, it's everything. The nuance of it is very important, because we do run into that, but it's my understanding that there is not a guarantee of placement. So what we'll do, the mechanics of this would end up being if we do approve any change in this policy under first reading, then we will turn around and at our special meeting Thursday night, we will revisit this under second reading for final approval, because due to the tight timeframes between now and the beginning of the school year. If, if we decide not to change that, then we just go in with the two individuals that were there, and any future or any additional exchange students.
Be turned away.
Will be turned away, and they'll have to find another district that would be willing to accept, which is an option, that it's not to say that they would be excluded from other districts, they could definitely do that as well.
And you can always revise the policy at the rate of time for another school year?
Why?
Like, we're just saying, like, we can revise it now, so what's to say we can't revise it before next school year?
We can.
I'm, I'm just.
I, I think I like where you're going, because the, the timing on, like, out of district is April fifteenth is the drop dead day for applications, and that's so the district can identify, get classes put together, know what our population's going to be, and then still allow for some flexibility for the few stragglers of district first, of district kids that come in in the last little bit, I mean, I just, two weeks prior to firing things up and opening the door seems really tight to me, that's just, just, I know when we're talking to one person, but we don't exactly know what the necessary support is going to be, like you said, English may not be as strong, I don't know, I'm just looking at from, I, I need some help from the admin here as far as.
Yeah, their English has to be strong, otherwise we, we'd get them to turn around when they go here, if they, if they blow to us, should say on their application that they have a certain standard of English. In terms, in terms of what you're saying, you know, in terms of timeframes, yeah, it's valid, it's a valid point, you know.
How are we doing for student classroom size and everything, you know, so, I mean, I know this, probably one kid is never going to break the seams, but, you know, one plus one plus one, pretty soon you're just talking some real numbers.
Yep. You know, we have a real lot of students in the, in the school, but what's the head count at the moment?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay. Yeah. Are we at breaking point? Yeah, it's, it's tight, it's a lot of kids.
How does the two-two-seven academy help plan to some of that movement of class sizes?
Yeah, so it should help to reduce class counts a little bit across the board, just because you're removing those forty-ish students from the general student population. And we, because we got the additional funding, we're able to staff up for that a little bit, so it's not like we pull the teachers away from the rest of the student population as well, so, so that will help alleviate a little bit of it. It's not, I don't think we've got sections at the high school that are bursting at the seams at twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty kids, though, do we?
I'm just looking.
And then as a typical for, for an exchange to come mid-year, like for a second semester versus year?
It's possible, it's not super common, usually it's a one-year placement, but I have heard about kids coming for a partial year. I've also witnessed situations where a student comes in this with, say, three different host families throughout the course of the year. You know, we haven't dealt with that here, but if it was a situation where those three host families lived in two different districts, that could get really weird too, so, that's something just to be aware of.
I guess my drawers are is that if we do consider changing the numbers, that we also put a application date, a deadline on, I don't know what that deadline should be.
Yeah, you know, it's, it's tough, because sometimes the requests and considerations, I, I know Kevin Dans and his family had a foreign exchange student last year, and I think they agreed, he called me, Kevin did, at, I think it was the end of June, and said, I heard you had, because we did have a foreign exchange student, my wife and I, the year before, and he said, I heard you had a foreign exchange student, I just want to know how it went, because we're thinking about taking on a student next year. And so that was, you know, late, if you're talking about April fifteenth deadline, I think a lot of families haven't even considered whether or not they're going to.
I'm just now seeing things surface of, like, there's four or six that want to come here, not necessarily East Helena, but Lewis and Clark County, and that's just been surfacing within the last month.
That's the way that, and you're reliant on the companies that are working, that are doing the transaction.
I would say it's typically late spring to early summer is when mostly requests come in, but I don't think it's uncommon to get a request in August.
No.
It makes it tough to plan when you can have extras.
It does a little bit, you know, I mean, I think you're always going to have those variables, you're always going to have families just moved into town a week before school starts, so I, I don't know that that's going to rock the boat too much. I do think that, you know, that if we settle on a number tonight, whether it's three or four, and I don't, and I wouldn't recommend going any higher than that, that we stick to our guns on that number for the foreseeable future, and, and so at that point, exchange company calls and says, hey, do you have room for foreign exchange students? No, sorry, we've already got our quota, and we can't take anymore, and our board doesn't want to hear about this anymore, so. We ain't going back there.
Tristan, I wanted to follow up with what your question was, because I wasn't sure if I understood it properly.
Well, we're, I feel like we're always revive, like, looking at policies, it's always policy, policy, so I'm just saying, does, does those they come back around eventually that where we have to look at policy again?
Oh, not necessarily.
Okay, well, I'm, it just seems, we can, we can bring it back. It seems like we've had a lot of policies, I'm like, maybe we just constantly do policies.
Well, we do constantly do policies.
Well, and, and part of that is associated with if the legislature has passed laws that we need to then change our policy to be in compliance with state law, and, you know, those types of issues.
That was my purpose of saying that, was that, from what I've seen, we keep doing policies, so why are they going to come back?
But in this particular case, it is specific to each individual school district, I mean, you could, the model policy says four, they could, you could actually change it up to twenty-four if you were a school district, and so desired, and so that would change. One thing I'm, I'm agreeing with Dan, is I would be really hesitant for us to continually revisit this number just based on, you know, what our applications are, that we should set something so everybody has a clear expectation of what we're doing and move forward.
You can add that in, do not revise until twenty-twenty-nine.
Well, I won't do that either, I won't do that either, but. But, so at this point, we can continue to discuss this, but if, if we've got an idea of how we want to add, then I would entertain a motion, like I said, this would solely be under first reading, we'll revisit it in our second reading if we do decide to reconsider it, or make the change, but I would entertain a motion from the board to make the change as they see fit.
Well, I'll make a motion to revise the policy to four students, foreign exchange students, if you get that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second from Stacy to modify policy thirty-one forty-five to change the maximum enrolled students to four. Does the board have any other additional questions, comments, concerns? I'm looking at you specifically, Brooke, if you had anything, any thought on numbers.
No, I think that's a good one.
Any questions or comments from the public?
Well, I can just tell you, the student that we have coming is at level six in English, whatever that means, but her letter that she wrote for her letter to the host family was very well written, so I don't imagine that there would be any problem with her coming here. I've been an exchange student in the past as well, I went to Norway and didn't know any Norwegians, they actually took me in, but that worked out really well, I think it's, I, I really appreciate you guys doing this, I think it'll be really good for East Helena.
As far as the application goes, AI does exist, so.
How is not AI, because there are errors in there, but not anything that would make it so she would be able to communicate.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing then, then I will call the question, all those in favor of the motion under first reading to change policy thirty-one forty-five to, from two to four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. We.
You get that?
Yeah. Tyrell is no.
Tyrell is nay?
Yeah. Then we'll revisit this on Thursday under second reading. Okay, next item on our agenda is our consideration of a non-resident extenuating circumstance request, and I'm not sure which one we have first.
First is Charlton.
This is the Charlton, okay. Okay. Before we get started on here, this is, this is one of the things where you get frustrated with the legislature and the school board association, because they've made this, the mechanics of this very difficult to navigate. So with that being said, before we hear this item, one of the things that the board needs to consider is whether or not we are going to actually hear the out of district application, we are under no responsibility based on our policy to, to consider the extenuating circumstance. If we do, then at that point in time, we'll need to go out of open session and into closed session and have that discussion, because then we're talking about an individual student involved with it. The, the, the motion to hear, the, to actually consider it is something that I think we can do in open session without reverting back into it. I look at your, I, Marcia, I look at your facial expression, and I agree a hundred percent is that it's, what I need to be careful of is to protect the identity of the students, and I don't really care whether or not the legislature has any rules or laws on it, when they start interfering with some of the requirements of us as a board to protect the student's privacy, I take that seriously, and so I am going to caution on the side of going into closed session on these things, just to make sure that none of that gets out. So if it's a case where we need to do that, then I am fully in favor of pulling that and going into closed session, you know, immediately, otherwise if we just, if there's no motion to consider, then we just, there's no action to even really go out, because that makes sense.
So you want a motion that comes, you potentially want a motion to consider in order to even talk about it?
Correct.
Right, so, yeah, the other option the board would have is to just, that, that item would die for lack of a motion if nobody made a motion to consider it. This particular request, if you saw the letter, was, and I want to be clear with the board, we've received between twenty and forty phone calls and requests for consideration for non-resident applications that were simply individuals who didn't have any prior relationship with the district, didn't know there was a deadline, and called in the middle of July and said, we just want to know what we have to do to get our child into East Helena High School, and we said, well, the application's open on January first, they close on April fifteenth, you can apply for a next school year starting on January first, so we're not bringing every one of these forward to the district, but we do have language in our policy that identifies extenuating circumstances, and the two requests that are on the agenda tonight, and I hesitate to belabor the board with these types of things, but we're struggling to find our footing on what constitutes an extenuating circumstance. When we discussed it and adopted the policy last spring, and we talked about extenuating circumstance, the number one thing that we talked about was a situation where we hire a teacher in June or July, they move to the area to take a job to work for us, and end up buying a house in Clancy or in Helena, but they want their child to come to school here, that would be an extenuating circumstance where we would consider that request outside the deadline. These two requests that are here tonight were, in my opinion, constitute extenuating circumstance but are outside the lines of what we had discussed as potential extenuating circumstances. The first one is a situation where already enrolled students in our school.
Before you go there, Dan, let's, let's just wait before we go through the back to the, the background information on that one, and then that way, so we'll discuss these individually.
Are we doing a motion for both, or?
Nope, it'll be singular.
Okay. Even for consideration, singular?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would make a motion for consideration of request one.
Okay, you have a motion and a second.
One second.
Okay, the, the extenuating circumstance associated with that, now, but now I'll let you, Dan, go ahead and.
Okay, so.
What's that?
Closed.
Nope, not yet, not yet.
So this is a situation where the students were enrolled in the East Helena schools, family moved out of the district after the April fifteenth deadline, student finished the school year. Student finished the school year at Bradley School, which they're allowed to do under our policy. Has finished the semester anyway, and had re-enrolled. Family was unaware that they needed to reapply for this coming school year because they'd already re-enrolled for the school year and had received a class assignment. And that was all captivated in the letter that was submitted by the family. So it's a situation that's unusual in my mind because of relocating outside the application window and possibly not knowing that they were going to relocate during the application window. And it doesn't add another student to our student count because it's a student that's already enrolled in our school. I think that the devil's advocate side of this could also say, "Well, what would stop any other family from coming in outside the application window and saying that they moved?" Because we don't have verification, right? So that, you know, there's the two sides to it.
So we have a motion, and this is just to, if the board will consider the extenuating circumstances. So we're not, we are not approving or denying it. It's whether or not we will even consider it. So I want to keep that clear. As clear as I can. Are there any questions, comments on the motion to consider from the board? Any questions or comments from the? It is now 7:40 and this meeting of the East Helena Public School Board of Trustees is now again open. And at this point in time, I would entertain a motion from the board.
I would make a motion to approve request one under extenuating circumstances.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Yeah, a second from Tristan. Any questions or comments from the board on the motion? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing then, I'll call the question. We'll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Aye.
Stacy, aye. Marcia?
Aye.
Tristan?
Aye.
Tyrell?
Nay.
Me, no. So vote forwarded to the motion to approve the enrollment of the non-present students that are extending waiting circumstances passes. So you will waste time, so. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the next one for a consideration of accept, non-resident acceptance under extenuating circumstances. Considering the issues that we had with the last one, it is my intention then to immediately go into closed session. I don't think that there's any reason for us to go through the process of consideration, going yea, nay, and then turning around and doing it in closed session with the consideration. So at this point in time, if we, if there's no movement, then we will, there won't be a motion coming in. So now it is 7:42 and, reading my cheat sheet one more time. As a presiding officer, I have determined that the demands of individual privacy clearly exceed the merits of public disclosure. To that end, we will now go into executive session. And at the completion of this agenda item, any and all actions resulting from the evaluation of this will be addressed in open section, open session. We'll temporarily be at recess until we can clear the room. Thanks. Okay, it's now eight o'clock PM and this regularly scheduled meeting of East Helena School Board is now back in open session. And at this point in time, I would entertain a motion from the board.
I would make a motion to accept request two under extenuating circumstances. Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve or allow. What'd you say, case two?
Accept.
Accept.
Request two.
Request two. Request two. Are there any questions or comments from the board? One thing I'd like to say is that these are difficult for me personally. I'll say that. Because at this point in time, I know that there's some people who think, "Well, what's the biggie? Let's go ahead and do that. It's not really impacting the district. It's just a one and done type of a deal." The problem is, is that the legislature had only provided us with a little bit of control over open enrollment. And the only thing that they gave us was a little bone that was a deadline. That deadline could have been April 15th. We could have set it at July 1st. We could set it for August 13th if we wanted to. But we chose as a board to do April 15th as that date. There are extenuating circumstances. There are certain reasons why that would necessarily be. But I just want to caution everyone that these considerations are serious because when we start getting open enrollment and we set these precedences, then any individual with that same precedent should be allowed to come in and say, "Because you allowed them to do it, we should get the same consideration." And I think there'd be an honest case for that. So that's the reason why we just, why we take these conversations so seriously. I am hoping that the legislature will do some things to clarify some of the confusion that they have created. But until then, we are stuck with it until probably sometime, or about this time next year.
Yeah.
So. So in the meantime, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments for the public? Seeing then, I'll call the question. All those in favor, I mean, we'll call vote. Mark?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Marcia?
Aye.
Tyrell?
Nay.
And I'm no. So vote forwarded to, the motion is approved. Thank you all for your patience and understanding as we went through this. But this will conclude this evening's regularly scheduled meeting of East Helena Public Schools. Our next meeting, as I alluded to, is Thursday at 5:30 right here at EVMS Library. And at that point in time, the major item on the agenda will be to discuss second reading of the foreign exchange student policy. So this is still applicable to tonight's agenda. But other than that, our regularly scheduled meeting will be scheduled, or is scheduled for September 9th, Monday, September 9th at East Helena High is what it says right here. And our own beloved Tyrell Murfit will be the presiding officer. So he looks surprised, but he was told probably four months ago that that was going to happen, so.
I can't remember what I had for breakfast.
Exactly. So with that, meeting's adjourned.